She's been doing better in predictions. I predicted that very few people would be at the last one and more ended up than I thought there would be.
I know.
I predicted more would be at this one and she predicted fewer and she's right again.
I represent the public.
Me too.
I don't like.
Well, that's good. That's good. Yep.
You don't make any sense either, so it's like.
Hey.
It's a firing squad.
Friend.
They're firing squad. Everybody is at this end.
Firing squad. Oh, pardon your French. Why pick your best shot?
You're right again Tracy on the number, more numbers.
Sure you.
Oh, even locking. I'm just a blink. So I have a couple of things I was looking at from the last one. One was the Lindsey's had a treatment done on their property, just their individual property, spraying something around. And I called that guy and he hadn't actually treated. Had actually treated with BTK on their individual trees that they sprayed. BTK is a bacteria that infects the stomachs of the moths.
For the moths or for the caterpillars?
The caterpillars. Yeah, moths before the moth. And what he didn't use that on there, he used a pesticide for killing mosquitoes that also kills the caterpillars for gypsy moths. Alright, so that's what I found out on that one. Wouldn't give me the prices and stuff because it depends on the jobs and those types of things. So it fluctuates, but. The other thing was the wording for the millage that was done in the nineties. So what I found out, there's actually an apology in the meeting minutes in October fifth nineteen ninety eight because the clerk didn't get it in. Um, in time for the November vote, but they hadn't passed it, so it must have passed. I don't know, somewhere in between November and a little after November somewhere. Uh, maybe that's a special election, but in July of ninety eight, they approved the wording for it. And it's just for the purpose of providing funds necessary to implement a gypsy moth suppression program. So and it was over five years nineteen ninety nine to two thousand three for the village and.
So that was put to vote.
Correct. Yep. And that's where we have that fourteen thousand dollars that's been sitting there since then. And so that can be used for anything to do with suppressing gypsy moths, not being outside suppressing just spread. So it's pretty decently clear line.
What happens if you don't use it?
Nothing.
It's just been sitting there.
But but if the stipulation is that you can't use it for anything else.
Correct.
Is it just gonna sit there perpetually?
Correct.
Yes.
That's kind of probably.
The money, right?
Of course, correct.
Yeah, but but want to draw interest?
We don't have that.
No, we put not as much in terms.
I mean, we could, um, but we don't currently have it in anything interest bearing.
That's a bit dodgy.
Yeah, that's good. That's right. Like there, that's true. She's kicking both interests.
Yeah, we have to. I mean, this is only fourteen thousand, but we have to balance what we have in M class versus we have a lot with community shores or. Choice one.
Choice one.
Um, I got that one's alright. Uh, so we don't want to. Pull too much over and cause them trouble, right?
That's that's where the balance is coming in.
But in that one, it's not very much.
Right, it still would be relatively minor, but you're right. It. I'm not opposed to using the fourteen grand for something. The discussions that occurred over the last couple of years have just been, what are you actually using it for? What are the logistics of the situation? Are we just coding as much of the township as we can? And one plane drop and then calling it good, which seems unreasonable to me for multiple reasons. But uh, so so that's that's the basic thing. So coming out of the last meeting. Um, there was a discussion of maybe having the fourteen thousand dollars available. For if someone wanted to say, I want my individual property treated and then we hire someone to go out. Treat their trees when the fourteen grand runs out, runs out and the program's done.
Wow. Wow. Well, I'm not sure I like that. I don't know.
Insulator, somebody that could do the BTK from the ground.
Maybe I said it, you probably could do it. He just, he just hasn't. So because and then when then it fluctuates in cost, it sounds like a lot of times the mosquito treatment ends up being cheaper. It kills more things.
Right, but that's the problem. It kills things, so.
Okay, so I'm going to interject, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's just a discussion. I'm not really running the meeting. Those are just notes from the last one and stuff I think.
Yeah.
Okay. So I may have got, I'm coming from that point of view. God's creation is beautiful just the way it is. He made it. He designed it and works incredibly well. When men started to interject playing God and starting to manipulate what nature is already doing. Through sprays or whatever this pesticide, things that were created in the laboratory. Alright, they start to throw that onto the land. It's not going to have a positive effect. But gypsy moths, I've lived in this community for thirty years. They come and go. I live back in the woods on six acres. None of my trees are worth for wear, you know? And I look at it this way. Well, is God sovereign? Does he do things in his time and in his way? Can he manipulate even nature? Yes, he can. So if you have an abundance of something, you must think to yourself as man of God or a woman of God. Maybe there's a shortage of something else. God decided, well, I need a little more food source, you know? And maybe this will help that. Okay, so that's kind of how I look at that and. So and then looking across the community, you have a lot of don't spray my stuff. Right, signs already posted. I would say for certain, if you're gonna blanket the community, you would be wrong. Don't touch my property with your sprays is what I've got to say to this. But that's a godly point.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I think that's a godly point of view. The other thing is, um. You know, Tracy and I had a little discussion a few days back. And I prefaced it and I would do that tomorrow night too when you and I thought of it. Yeah, I prefaced it by saying. I look at government representatives and. And their motivation in three ways. Either you come into office to maintain what is currently being done. Just try to cross all all the Ts and dot all the Is. Make sure that you fulfill your obligation in that area. The other one is you may come into office and you want to do well. But in order to do that, you have to find additional funding. Which increases the burden on the community. Cause we're already, everybody sitting at this table understands we're already taxed above our eyebrows. And I told Tracy who left who left a glen for ten percent tax. And I'll tell you how high is it currently? Oh, fifty percent. But I looked at the townships balance with money is being spent and. Not where it's being spent, where it's being divvied out. We aren't even spending it here locally. Seventy-five percent of it has been given away to schooling. You didn't know that?
No, I really didn't know that.
Forty-two percent to school debt. I think it's twenty-two percent.
Our children.
Twenty-two percent intermediate school district. And seventeen percent to mosquito community college. That's seventy-five percent. But the taxes that are coming in from our community on the property tax are going right through us and over there. And I share this, and I will, this will be a little redundant because I'm not gonna go on enough.
No, I agree with, we we agree on this.
And and I I share, I will share with you tomorrow as well, you know, that.
I mean, but the subject here is really gypsy.
But I'm I'm including the fact that you don't want to spend my money. If the third, the third option being wanting to maintain to increase burden. The third option is. Stop the bust, back the bus up. Begin to cut the tax rules. Begin to bring back into balance what is reasonable in regards to the community. And currently, things are way out of whack, not reasonable. We all resent it, you know? And so. You guys have to decide, why are you here? What is your motivation? What are you doing? Are you planning to cut our taxes? If you're not, you're one of the other two categories, maintain or do something good, but not even acknowledging you're increasing the burden. So that's all I really have to say.
It's good.
But is, so is your case basically, we shouldn't increase taxes taxes for gypsy moths? So that seems extremely reasonable.
You shouldn't, you, my, my case, my case is you don't increase uh expenditures for anything right now. And you don't spray for gypsy moths because you're you're contaminating God given environment. You're doing more harm than good.
Are you saying not use the fourteen grand then? Do you just let it sit?
I would say in regards to that fourteen grand, I would put it before the community. Ask community what they want to do with that fourteen grand.
We're literally here. This is this is it. We're doing that currently.
Well, potentially you could take that fourteen grand and put it towards your brand new employee over there.
That would be illegal.
That would be illegal.
Correct.
Alright, so why would that be illegal?
Cause it was passed as a millage for gypsy moth suppression.
So we briefly said that you cannot use that anything toward anything else.
Right, right. It should, it's that or nothing. Which is what we've done the last couple of years. We just haven't done anything with it.
Yeah, I would suggest. I would suggest. You can always give it back to the community. Alright, they're the ones that put it in the PAC to begin with. Refund it to them on their property tax. Whatever that amount is, whatever that percentage is, give it back. If you're not gonna use it.
Something, something like that might be possible. I'm not sure exactly what the process is.
Okay.
Excellent.
But that would be one way you can begin the process of doing what's right for the community in regards to decreasing their tax level.
Cause people can spray on their own property if they want.
Absolutely. Again, there's nothing stopping people from spraying on them. That's kind of been my case the last couple of years. There's nothing stopping people from spraying on their own property. Yeah, it seems extremely weird to me. Now, what I looked into a couple of years ago, right, was doing like the airdrop stuff. But if you're doing the airdrop stuff, then you should send out letters. Anyone that wants to be excluded should be able to be excluded.
Right.
And it ends up into a logistical mess.
So you're talking about. That spray is coming from the sky.
Correct.
Well, there's no control over that.
No, there's no control on that. That goes for the wind blows.
Right. And so, which is why we haven't, we haven't moved on anything.
Which is why there's ants, there's pets with all kinds of. Believe it, there's critters outside.
Need more pigs around, they eat them.
Thank you, Thomas.
Well, I see a meat, oh, I see a meat hole, really.
Are you a chicken to eat them?
Somebody said, somebody said chickens won't eat them.
Someone said the last meeting, chickens will.
Oh, really?
But I, I don't know that.
I don't know. It seems to me my chickens eat everything. From my experience, chickens or pigs will eat anything. And 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 the fox eat my chickens.
They don't, it's a fish.
You know what? I'm getting a dog that'll eat foxes. That's how it works.
I got a platinum.
I'm getting, I got an hour of horse to the Great Pyrenees and cross with a, um. It's a flock.
Oh, he will look like you.
It's about a hundred fifty pounds.
Seriously. Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm sorry.
Ten pounds.
Yeah, I had one, I was sitting out there this morning, believe it or not, I was sitting out there this morning. I have four geese, I have about uh eight ducks and I've got only seven chickens left. And I have free range, which is kind of stupid, but yeah, I put the flies. And so was, expect what so is gonna eat your chicken. Everybody likes chicken. So. So there I'm sitting there and all of a sudden there's this commotion to my left. I look over and all of my ducks are flocking across in front of me and I'm like. What are you crazy duck? What? Why? And I heard a ruckus something this way and I look, there's a fox chasing down one of my chickens. Right there in daylight.
They found it, yeah.
I know.
Up there.
They find, they found it as a brief market sport at this point.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there's nobody out here to protect them, so I can't sell it. It's my first sale. So you lock them in the, in the fencing, right? That's what you do. When you have an issue.
The dog can, with, with.
Yeah. That's true.
Yeah, well, and once I get the dog, then he's gonna, he's gonna go around pee everywhere. And they're, they're gonna go, they're gonna go. I'm going to the neighbors. That's where the foxes go, I hate it.
So we've got, so from the last one, we basically had the proposal of treating individual people's land with with the fangs, right? Um, and let's propose more of taking the the fangs that are left and redistributing them to insects. And I look at what that process is like, if it's possible, I guess. Um, so those are, I mean, other thoughts, ideas, comments, concerns, proposals.
No, I like that. I like that idea. I would vote for that.
It seems like it's limited. To gypsy moths.
Or not.
Or nothing, or if we can. Which might be kind of tame, but to divvy a neck out, but that, then you'd have to see, I mean, really. No, that'd be, it seems to me like if you wanted to be fair, it had, you'd have to like look at who paid for it way back then because like I didn't pay, I just moved here, so.
I don't, I don't think I doubt that would work. I'm guessing it has to go back proportionally to the properties.
I must go off.
Just, just whatever, yeah, just cut it back, yeah.
Cause like, yes.
What, you're saying raise that money?
Ninety-nine through two thousand three.
Oh, I'm in.
But I think you could, I think you just um credit it back to the property. Like you say, you can't. We can't track down where anybody is.
Yeah, police. Yeah. Yeah. I, I'll look into that some, but. I'm guessing it goes back to parcels, right? It's like.
Yeah.
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 The amount, based on how much you pay, person pays more taxes, gets more on.
Yeah.
Unless it was a flat rate.
It probably comes, it probably come to like cents. It depends on how it.
Yeah.
Um, it was one mill. It was one mill.
It's not gonna be a lot.
For five years.
Yeah, but there's a lot of people involved, a lot of properties right in the township.
And you're making a statement by doing that.
Exactly, I agree.
Is that?
I agree.
Here you're saying that we're moving in a direction of cutting your tax burden.
Not adding to the burden.
There may be, of course, there's gonna be some that don't like it, but well.
True, it's.
I, I mean, I wear Doc Marten shoes and so if we, if I promoted that, we had a photo, there'd be huge disagreement.
Oh.
Huge political kerfuffle, so. True, true.
They're just not always frantic.
They're canvas top, so they're lighter.
More practical. I love it.
Dude, I mean, so other thoughts, ideas, comments, concerns?
Yeah, we talked a little bit the other day when you picked your mail. That's just, I mean, people that said that stuff weren't here, so. I was just, I listened to the original the other one the other day. I was just. My main concern was the lady that was that kind of tied it all together.
Okay, yeah, organized it, yeah.
And the main concerns were they're disgusting and gross, which I didn't really. It's not a very good argument to me, right? Trees made.
It's just got, it's just got caterpillar poop trapped all over the place. Like it's not like raining in my place. It just did.
You've been here on chewing, which you've been here on chewing.
Which whatever, I mean.
Chewing is okay.
And it's part of the process.
Yeah, no big deal. I mean, it means, they'll go through it. I mean. I know my mom works at Ralston Township, um, Grand Haven, they're on Southside Grand Haven.
Yeah.
They're having a meeting too about gypsy moths, cause people are saying something about it, but the, I think they're bringing in the DNR or something else, cause the DNR is done. They're saying. We don't do it. We don't, right? No, we don't uh promote doing it, cause they're here. They're, you don't change anything. I mean, we've been doing, I mean, nineteen ninety-eight, what is that, almost thirty years?
Yeah.
That this has been like at least been going on, like, doesn't change anything, so. That's my, that's my only two cents to say to anybody, how to say, you've been doing it for this long. Really not doing anything. It's just vaccine, they're waiting people's concern through grossness at the level. It's kind of silly.
Yeah, when I've got, when I partnered with the county and the DNR and stuff a couple of years ago on it. They, they basically have to go through whatever cycle they're gonna go through. So in late nineties, it was, I think it was like a handful of years. In two thousand nine, it was like one year. When I came in, I was like, hopefully this is one year, I think. It wasn't, but it's continuing, but even treatments and whatnot won't actually reduce the cycle. They reduce the nuisance for that year.
Just for the year.
If you hit it correctly and time hit everything, that's what we do.
Oh, geez.
Right, and well, timing has to be very important for COVID leaves correctly, whatever. You have to, cause even if you use the BTK on leaves and solidifies on the leaves, but if the caterpillars are too large, they can absorb it without dying apparently. And if they're too young, it also doesn't work. But they, so it's like a reduce the nuisance at that time, but you can't actually cut down the cycle. Although I've also got communication from the DNR the last few years that, hey, it looks like it won't be bad again this year and they've been wrong the last couple of years, so.
The whole thing about putting a toxin on the, on the, on the earth that implodes the stomach. I'm like, are people making the connection between leaky gut syndromes happening? And genetically modified foods? Are they not making dot, connecting dots?
That's really.
That you're messing with your baby teeth?
Yeah, I didn't think to this.
Which is gonna be messing with us ultimately in our bodies.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
I guess that was my only other point. I know people say it's organic, the BTK, I mean, it's a naturally occurring thing. But it's not in the concentration that's being put out.
Right, exactly.
And it's from the ground, not in the air.
That's right.
So like, we're putting something that, okay, it is naturally occurring. I mean, uranium is natural occurring too, but.
Yeah.
Um.
I know, I hear that.
So you're, you're putting it in a higher concentration in an area that's not where it's normally found.
Yeah, it's aerosol formed or what else.
Right.
Yeah, you're changing how it's used in the nature, so.
You know, nature.
It is only.
That's why I don't.
Gypsy moth caterpillars.
That's what it's like.
Or is that?
What, what they promote is that it does really limit what it kills, cause they say it doesn't kill minors and stuff. So I haven't read it heavily just lately.
Because they're, because they're not eating the oak leaves.
It's, but, but yeah, it seems odd because yeah, if you spray it from the air, I mean, it's gonna cope this, that.
They're gonna get it.
It seems like it would cope everything and you can't.
Maws, birds eat maws.
Yeah.
They eat maws.
That's not cool.
That's the reason why I don't use it.
It's a food source.
They do.
I buy stuff, it's organically certified or whatever. You can use it on an organic farm, but that's why I still don't.
Sure.
Cause it's still, you're still destroying an insect.
You have a forest fire, it rejuvenates the land.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe.
You know, you go out in the yard and you prune branches from your trees. It's basically what's gypsy moth doing. It's pruning these trees.
Sure.
You know, if you're a farmer, if you're a gardener, that when you prune things, they tend to flourish. They tend to get stronger. So there's a lot of good associated with that. It's like, I'll go on a quick little rabbit trail. It's like, it's like a friend of mine shared with me one time. I was whining and complaining about moles. And he says, what is your problem? He says, just let them do what they do. And once they're done, your, your yard will benefit.
Yeah.
He says, cause they're getting after the grubs. The grubs are eating the roots.
Yeah, that's right.
And once they eat up all the grubs, they go along and now your soil is aerated.
Yep, exactly.
So how simple is that, you know, when you think about it in their terms?
Yeah, it's creation is amazing.
Worse. It works.
Yeah, it's creation is amazing.
It is.
It is. It's, it's ecological and it's like, it creates certain things, certain butterflies to pollinate certain flowers.
Yeah, and they come out of nowhere.
Yeah, and it's usually not common unless be specific. Butterfly is common. It's just like, I just may have to tamper. It's like, wow, yeah. Sorry. Right, right door.
Oh, you're good.
Yeah. Alright.
There, I mean, anything else? Anything to do with this? So what it could do, so if we have two major different directions on the programs, right? One is using funds for the treatment off of the ground. The other one is refunding funds. We'll have to look into that process.
Okay.
But I can look into that process and see, see what it's like, see if it's possible, that type of stuff. And then I could bring it to the board for, for discussion. Does that seem like a reasonable next step?
Yeah.
One last question. Using it on the ground is one of your solutions or choices?
Instead of an airdrop.
And so that would not include people's property that have signage saying, don't test with my process?
No, so that proposal is basically like you, someone would request. So they say, hey, come do my property.
Perfect, perfect.
Yeah, the signs that you see out alongside the road are for the road commission treatment that they throw into the ditches to kill certain types of plants that grow.
Yep.
So.
They're done and they're done for this year, so if you know anybody's got signs up, yeah, most of them, don't take them down.
Well, the road commission recently changed how they're doing it.
Where do you find the signs?
You have to come from the road commission.
Do you have one out there?
Yeah, and then you keep it.
And they buy me.
And if you're on the list, they send you a letter that says, put them out.
How do you know that?
Very good.
They had first call, I mean, I was already on the no spray list, but I didn't have any signs. I ended up calling, I got the letter and then I phoned and. Uh, I can't remember guy's name at the, at the road commission, like the maintenance dude.
Yeah, that's, that's how it's, it's how.
Drew.
Huh?
Drew.
Drew, okay, yeah, but he, he said, well, we'll have him out. We'll, we'll be bringing him out next week.
Yeah.
And then they were, they were very, uh.
You keep them.
They, no, you just keep, keep the sign.
And then they send you a letter and you put it on.
When the letter comes out next year, right, and you sign it back out and go.
Yeah. Yeah, so a different treatment thing, um, probably the most known treatment thing in the area would be what the, what the rope does. And there are a lot of signs out for that. So, but yeah, I'm not, it was a proposal last time because when I looked at all the drop in from air and stuff before, I'm just like. I'm not doing that right. I didn't know that. And then second of all, I'm like, even if people want it, then you, we have to do a massive program sending out letters. If people don't want to be on it, then you're gonna have to have some sort of buffers though, because of the potential wind, stuff like that. And so, uh, yeah, so it's not a proposal for this, for them.
They could, they told, they told the guys in the down that H and R was just fine when I heard the letter.
No.
Well, that's what we say with all chemicals and treatments that's invented at first.
I know.
And usually the evidence supports it because we have no evidence.
Exactly.
So it's like uh P pass and P phos, right?
Right.
So they, I mean, at first, just miracle chemicals, they're just very useful. Now it's like, well, they wrap themselves around your DNA. But it doesn't really seem to cause any problems.
That's true.
But twenty, twenty years from now.
Yeah.
I guarantee you, they're gonna say this stuff is so super analytical, it's killing tons of people.
Where's Parkinson's? Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Or they're just another name of something else.
Yeah.
But you can't do long-term studies without the long-term.
And as fast as AI is rewriting history right now, it's gonna be an issue. It'll be buried in the ether. Seriously, I still.
We're gonna have to write our paper.
That form that I sent you the other day.
Yes.
From the state of Michigan. From the day before that I read it to the next day when I sent it to you. Terminology was changed. They put paragraphs in front of it and a paragraph behind it. I how it wouldn't be a good idea to vote on paper. And the term Bailey, it can't be removed.
Oh, interesting.
I know, but you still got the essence of it where you have that ability to choose what process you like to use.
Bailey.
And that, and it breaks it more.
Not a, not a commonly used term, Bailey.
Anyway, I had to look it up. I said, this is a nice and cool term, you know, so I looked it up. I said, okay, like, it's your difference. It's totally up to you. Yeah, yeah, but that was.
I think it's a little thing.
Oh, no. Am I paranoid or am I conspiracy? Yes, I am.
But see, it's not a conspiracy because.
It's probably. What?
It's not a conspiracy because it's really happening.
Well, conspiracies to me is not a dirty word.
It's like, didn't they try and hold it to balance?
It does.
So what, yeah, so gypsy moths. Do we have words like spongy moths, right? Uh, do we have any other comments on that?
I'm a little unsure.
I'm getting a number here.
Okay.
So we've got fourteen thousand six hundred roughly in the font. So we have. I'm just looking for a number. Do you know how many parcels we have?
I had it memorized before, six thousand eight hundred eighty-three maybe?
Yeah, so. Big word, but.
Six eight seven seven. Six eight seven seven.
Oh, wow. Good job in there.
Maybe all of the years.
What was I, six off?
Six off?
So that is two dollars and twelve cents per parcel.
I'll just step on a redirection. You're not, you're not increasing burden. You're actually saying you're going to.
But it would be a little more complex than that because the township is probably excluded. So we have to exclude those parcels.
Right.
Which is a lot, so, but we have to work that out. So now it's contactable here and given this wording.
So then that eats up some of the, you know, how much will it cost us to refund, refund the money?
Refund. Hey, where?
Yes, if we're gonna get to it.
Yeah.
What a dilemma.
It depends if you're taking that money and out of that. So because we.
But it's either way, yeah, it's like it costs us.
Well, it costs some money to just go through the process for sure.
It's just a data transaction, isn't it? Come on, we don't even use cash.
If we could, uh.
Seriously.
Well, I think it would be a deduction, so it would just be like your taxes aren't as big this year by a couple of dollars.
It'd have to be adjusted across the board.
Right, it would have to.
Clear.
For every parcel.
Yeah, for every parcel.
Uh, so that part of it, but the attorney fees figuring out if we can do it, if we have to, like. Backwards specialist us, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, cause I'm not sure, well, cause it's a village. So, but I don't know if it ends up just being a deduction or bankruptcy or refund going out, or.
Either way.
So, who's our attorney? Uh, Michael Myers, so our primary attorney is Jim Scales.
How did you come to that conclusion? By using those two sources.
Why do we use them?
Those particular sources?
Those are the lawyers that we had when I came in.
Okay, so they were appointed, they were appointed by who?
The board.
The board hiring?
It was like.
Were they recommended by who?
Thousand.
I'm not sure.
They're not recommended by anybody, they were already in place to get with, and then the dirty rats went after their farm.
Well, that.
And I don't want it.
Well.
But all the lawyers.
No, that's what they kept doing, what they were told.
Well. That's a, that's a legitimate question.
They took, they took money that they knew they weren't gonna win.
Really, cause you can, you can have, you can, well, but, you could have lawyers appointed by a faction that is doing harm. Or you could have lawyers appointed. By you that have your best interest in mind.
Right.
For the, for instance, Stephanie, who's bringing indictment. Against the voting debacle in Muskegon.
Yeah.
And who's after her, but. Vessel and Hilson. Vessel and Hilson. Local.
Yeah.
Are after Stephanie, who has the interest.
Of the community.
Of the community at heart, so there's a difference.
But any, any, any three of those lawyers, do they do municipal law, that they get hired by local municipalities?
That's, somebody you'd have to investigate.
Vessel and Hilson, one hundred percent, no, tell, right, they, one hundred percent do not do that. And so it's, I'm not sure about Stephanie. Right, but it's, but it's mercenary, see, it's, it's very difficult to hire a municipal law firm. I've been, like, when we did the water mile support, we went through the hiring for them. And so we had, you know, the municipal law firms, the, the normal ones that put in for it from the area, um, and Michigan. Um, I mean, it's, you're, you're hiring a mercenary, and then you're directing them. Uh, I mean, you, it's, you can attempt to hire a crusader. But a crusader that will do municipal law and answer your questions about special assessments on roads and these types of things. They're not, they're not usually a thing, as far as I can tell. If you find one, send them to me.
Sure.
We can have that, we can have these meetings over.
That's the reason I qualified.
Yeah, and that's, uh, isn't, like you say, isn't it more of a directive?
A directive, right.
So. So to say that, you know, they were the reason that, they, they weren't the reason that.
Well, so if the board. They're the same lawyers that.
It's not that, it's the fact that they took on a lawsuit knowing that they would not win, to me, that's, that's corruptible.
Well, it's, and, and. Again, I mean, that's, that's a clear job, that's a.
Right.
I mean, I don't have.
So if, if I went to the lawyer, right, we made a resolution against vaccine mandates.
Yeah.
And so I, if I went to the lawyer and said, hey, check this resolution, I'm looking at getting passed, and they said, we don't believe in this, we won't do it. Do you think we should keep them?
If they feel that they could win or lose.
We can't win the vaccine mandate thing, we have, we have no authority over it, we lose, one hundred percent. The, the food, the food ordinance that we're doing, we probably lose. So you think they should just reject almost all, all of this stuff that you agree with that we've got?
I'd be like, I'm out of here, sorry.
Lawyers are mercenaries. If they're not a mercenary, they're not a good lawyer, before you die.
True. True now. True now.
I want mercenaries that are lawyers, that are lawyers that are mercenaries.
I do too.
And they.
Then you're better lawyers. Plus, they have the righteousness of God in mind to do the right thing. Not just.
If they have that.
If, if you have a proposal for lawyers.
Gain their revenue or the favor.
You, you know, you know, I'm opening this up, if you have a proposal for lawyers, bring.
I'll bring it if I can.
We can have, we can have tons of meetings, we can have like five meetings, right?
Well.
When I like, is there anything else on gypsy?
No.
So.
We're good in time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.